All right, it's four o'clock. We are having a work session, City Council work session today. It is a Gallagher conversation, excuse me, to potentially discuss, I believe we have a guest, Matt Gianessi from CMC. Carl had told us earlier, or told me earlier, that he wouldn't be able to be here for the entirety of the meeting. He had some other commitments. And so I believe Anna Eitenberg will jump on when Carl has to log off. Is that correct, Carl? Is that correct, Carl?
That is correct. Anna is trying to get on right now. I think that she got sent.
She's an attendee right now. Let me.
Can you just like elevator to?
I just did.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I am gonna jump out. I've got a couple of other things going on, not the least of which is my ninth wedding anniversary today. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump off here. There's Anna and I will be back and I'll probably take you guys through the the land use hearing tonight in that she was, she worked at, at the planning commission is intimately familiar with it. And then I will hop back on. I apologize for that, but you know, birthdays and anniversaries and other things. So anyway, with that, I'm gonna hop off and have fun with Gallagher. And I do want to say thank you to Paula real quick. She sent a great link that she found. That video is one of the better descriptions of Gallagher and the impacts, especially this year that I've seen. And so I think if you had a chance to watch it, it's super helpful. So. Anyway, with that, I will see you guys a little bit later. Thanks a lot.
All right. Thanks, Carl. Um, well, I guess we can just launch right into it. Is Anna or is Matt Gianessi in yet? Or Gary? Gary, do you want to talk? No, no, he does not. Okay. Well, guys, who's leading this thing? All right. So here's what I know about Gallagher. No. Okay, go ahead, Deborah, please.
I think the idea was to have Matt lead it. I think we should wait for him. I honestly don't know enough about Gallagher to even pretend to big up. And we have Matt.
Hello, Matt. How you doing? Nope, you're muted.
Well, Matt is figuring out how various. Thank you, Matt, very much. I do have a couple of members of the rural fire board who are calling in as well. And I think the plan, Matt, was to hand it over to you.
Okay, thanks, Deborah. Am I, I know I sent, I apologize for being a couple of minutes late. I have a brand new laptop as of an hour ago. And so I had to download a few new items to run this. I sent a PDF over to you with the, some of the slides. Is that something that you're gonna run on your side or has everybody seen that? Or is that something that, that's gonna be on my side?
I think, can you share your screen with it?
I can. I just need to, again, it's a brand new computer. So give me a moment while I, I'm fairly confident I can find this. I wasn't sure about that. So let me start though, while I'm looking for this and invite everybody to ask questions that you might have. I've been invited to speak a little bit about the Gallagher amendment. I'll do this sharing of my screen here momentarily. So I'll start here with the Gallagher amendment and let's see how much folks understand about this. Over the last several years, Colorado Mountain College has been heavily involved in the Gallagher amendment and helping both to educate our community and to understand the impact of the Gallagher amendment, especially on rural Colorado, as well as to understand ways that it is affecting many of the organizations, the publicly funded organizations in our region. A couple of things to know about Gallagher before I go forward is it's often conflated with the Tabor amendment. And sometimes I've been in public forums where I've described the Gallagher amendment and people will think it's actually Tabor. They are related. So Gallagher and Tabor do have some attributes that, that connect them in important ways. And I'll explain those as we go along. But Gallagher actually preceded Tabor. And so it was on the books for almost a decade before the Tabor amendments came along. And so recognizing that Gallagher is really reflecting, a reflection of kind of 1980s thinking in Colorado. The Tabor amendment came along in the 90s. And so here we are in 2020 and we're wrestling with some of the effects of some of these and looking for solutions across the state. So just to kind of set the stage that Gallagher is often misunderstood in that way. So a little bit about the Gallagher amendment to make sure that you're familiar with it. I mean, there'll be a test at the end. So I hope everybody's taking good notes. We will make sure that you know this well. So the Gallagher amendment was established in 1982 by a gentleman named Dennis Gallagher, who was then the assessor for the city and county of Denver and also a legislator. And what they tried to do at the time was they found that different counties and different regions were taxing properties in different ways. And so they tried to come up with a way to come up with a statewide sort of standard, a consistent way across the entire state, across different types of properties that would allow sort of the property taxation, whether it's commercial, residential or non-residential, to be, to follow a consistent pattern. And what they came up with at the time was you'll hear this shorthand referred to as the 5545 split or the 5545 ratio. And you don't need to know the math behind it, but understand that what they do is the legislature, every other year, the legislature looks at the total amount of property taxes collected for the entire state of Colorado and then determines whether or not they fall into this 55% non-residential tax revenue. So again, keep it, it's not tax rate, it's tax revenue and 45% residential tax revenue. I'll get to why this becomes a complication in rural Colorado, in particular in resort rural Colorado here momentarily. But what this does is in order to accomplish this 5545 split, and again, those are somewhat arbitrary. And so you can go back and try to figure out why they came up with 55 and 45 and not 5050 and not, you know, 6040 or it is 5545. That's what's in our constitution. But what it does in order to get to that number, there's an assessment rate that's applied to each, the non-residential and the residential on properties. Non-residential taxes or residential properties, and this is all non-residential. Agricultural, commercial, it could be any farmland, it could be oil and gas production land, it could be the restaurant across the street. Any of those kinds of non-residential properties are taxed and/or are assessed at 29% of the value of that property. And that's fixed. So in our constitution, it says if it is a non-residential property, it is, the 29% of that, of that property's value will be taxed. In contrast, if it is a residential assessment, the rate actually floats downward. And I'll show you a table here momentarily where you can see why that works. And you might ask yourself, why does resident, non-residential tax or properties have a fixed rate? And why do residential have a floating rate? Again, you have to go back to 1982. And what they were experiencing at the time was that the majority of taxes at the time in the state at that time, they felt were residential. And so they wanted to be able to allow, as the state grows, to allow residential taxes to decrease as a percentage of the overall value. I don't think that in 1982, I remember I lived in Colorado in the early 80s. That's when I moved here. And I'm not sure any of us saw Colorado becoming what it is today. Back then, when you see the explosive growth in our state and the number of new properties, residential properties coming along. Colorado was a very different state back then. And so the, the 29% in the floating assessment rate for residential really reflects kind of again, 1980s thinking about what the world looked like in Colorado at the time. Finally, and then this is just to kind of give you this sense of what happens if revenues are ever out of balance, this 5545 split. Let's say that the legislature gets together and takes a look at the taxes and says, wow, non-residential taxes and residential taxes don't fit this 5545 split. What do we do? The only method available to the legislature, there's only one thing they can do. The legislature can only lower taxes. They can only lower the one tax, which is the residential, not the commercial. They're not allowed to touch the commercial and they're not allowed to increase taxes under Tabor. So the legislature has no authority to increase taxes. They can only lower taxes. So since the 1990s, over the last several decades, the only method they've had to reconcile these numbers is to lower revenue coming into the state overall. And I'll show you what that looks like. So you'll see here, just going back to the early 90s, when Gallagher was started, it was a 29% non-residential rate with a 21% residential rate. And they thought that kind of fit the 5545 balance. Again, these are a lot of numbers, but just understand that they were a whole lot closer in the 80s than they are now. Since the growth of the state started and we started to see a lot of new residential properties coming along in the state and a lot of, a lot of population growth along with it and then Tabor, which doesn't allow the legislature to ever increase a tax rate. What's been happening over the last couple of decades is you'll see this residential rate has gone from 21% to 18 to 10 to, let's call it eight, 7.2, most recently 7.15. And what has everybody alarmed right now is that it is projected under the current DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs has announced that if nothing changes as of today, if the legislature has to act on a Gallagher reassessment, the residential rate will, will drop from 7.15 to 5.88. In effect, that is an 18% reduction in property assessment that's coming into the state simply because of a formula in Gallagher. If not, it is not because of total revenues that may be needed. It is actually based upon a formula that 4555 balancing. I'll stop for just a moment. I have some other slides to talk to you about why this is. But in case there's anything that's unclear, I'll go ahead and stop and see if there are any questions. Okay, seeing none, let's keep going so that you can wrap your arms around what's happening here. So when we ran, when Colorado Mountain College ran our measure, which was 7A two years ago, and we had a campaign, of course, and we're talking about what the Gallagher amendment is and the impact on rural Colorado. We came up with this. And again, this is purely theoretical, but it does show what it would look like precisely according to, and again, I'm just going to click back, if we follow this plan, so what happened to residential and non-residential for the same exact property? This will at least give you an illustration of what happened. So if you go back to 1982 and if you look at the bottom there, that shows 1982 on a home that is valued at $150,000. So the blue line is the value of the home. And again, this is purely theoretical, but we put a 3% annual growth rate on that home. Who can imagine $150,000 home in Glenwood Springs today? So there's the theoretical home. But in 1982, about a home valued at $150,000 had a residential tax effort of $125, almost $126. Fast forward, and again, this is when we did this the last time, but we were trying to show some estimates of when those rates were. But if you look at, say, that 2019, 2020 number, so fast forward a few decades, the same exact home may have doubled or even tripled in value. But because of the assessment changes, the home itself is actually now paying less money in taxes than it did back in 1982. This is the challenge for rural Colorado and especially in resort towns across our communities, because so many of our property values are, or our properties are such high value properties. And we done, and we see many of the, and many of the communities in our, in CMC's region, including, you know, Vale and Aspen and Steamboat Springs and Breckenridge. And these are homes that are owned by people who don't live here. So they're not paying property or they're not paying income taxes necessarily. They may be out of state. And they're not necessarily business owners or others who are using their property for other purposes. It's a vacation home or a second home or some of them, it's a VRBO. And they may have multiple VRBOs, but because they're listed as residential and not commercial, they, they, they have this experience where their property values may go up, but the tax effort goes down because of a statewide, because of the Gallagher amendment, the statewide rate. The result is, and just to kind of jump to the benediction on this, what happens is, is that our school districts in particular are most at risk. And school districts derive the majority of their revenues in most cases from local property taxes. And when those deteriorate, they are backfilled from the state. But as most of you know, the state does not have a lot of extra revenue to, to supplement any or supplant any losses in local revenues. And so the effect is an overall reduction in money that might go to K-12. And it also affects every other agency or special district that is funded by property taxes, including Colorado Mountain College. So Colorado Mountain College, say the water district, sanitation districts, if those exist, we often see it with fire districts and others. And so what happens is every other year, when we see property values and commercial values out of balance, even if the region is healthy financially or economically, we still may actually end up with a net loss in revenue, even though we have, we are experiencing greater demands for our services. And this has been the whole dilemma with the Gallagher amendment. And this is again, just to show you our example.
Hey, Matt. Yeah, I'm sorry. Rick Forhees has his hand up. I don't want to, go ahead, Rick.
Hey, Matt. On your previous slide there, just so I can focus in a little bit, 12591 in 1982 down to 7971, are those adjusted numbers for inflation or is that just raw dollars?
So those are, they are adjusted for inflation because obviously it's based upon the valuation of the home, which is adjusted. But it, it, a good point that I think I missed, Rick, is that it's based on a per $100,000 of property value. So that's what that reflects. But it give you a sense that the value of the home is actually increasing, the actual amount of revenue coming in from the home is decreasing.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. So whether or not we agree that these are the right inflation rate or other, but this is just applying these very numbers. So these exact numbers to just an example home of just to kind of say, why is this happening? And again, if you think about our communities, I remember when my dad, when I was in, you know, the early 80s and my dad was talking about buying a condo in Breckenridge for $32,000 or something ridiculous like that. And recognizing that now the valuation of our properties in this area are skyrocketing while we're also seeing a reduction in the actual revenue coming in potentially. And again, this is, this is where it gets complicated because in some communities, they're actually receiving the same amount of revenue or more. But in, in particular communities that are maybe seeing economic decline, they may actually see a net loss. And so this is where that kind of statewide formula may not fit every community and why CMC and other fire districts and the like have been looking for ways to sort of have a correction in the event that these things happen locally. Are there other questions? I'm sorry. I can't see everybody's hand here.
I, I can see everybody's hand and it doesn't look like anybody is, has any further questions at this point. So if I, if I see that, Matt, I'll just kind of try to find a time where you're pausing and interrupt and just grab you.
Great. That's, thank, thank you so much. So this is just to give you an illustration of when, when CMC first saw this. It's not the first time. That's probably the wrong way to say it. When we became very serious about looking at solutions for the Gallagher amendment. And this is the actual slide that we presented to our trustees in April of 2017. And what you see on the left-hand side, we always do a five-year look back and a five-year forecast in our budgeting at the college. And so we're always trying to figure out, okay, how much, where do we think we are in the past? How, where do we think we're going in the future? And what decisions do we need to make? That dark black line on that kind of top line, that is our overall operating expenses. And so what we're trying to do, of course, is meet that number as closely as we can. And we only allow that to grow at inflation. And so we are not growing faster than inflation. We always actually grow slower than inflation. We have been for the last several years. And so when we were setting our budget in April of 2017, we thought we were right in line. We thought things were fine, things looked good. And then what happened is the Gallagher reassessment happened with the legislature. We reran the exact same. So the values of the homes were exactly the same as they were a week before. And yet we ran those new numbers based upon the assessment rates that were provided to us in the adjustment that happened in 2017. And you'll see that, that, that black line no longer met, or our revenues no longer met our projected expenses. And so we were facing a potential very significant decline in our revenues from an operating standpoint, and yet nothing changed in our environment. The environment was exactly the same as it was a few weeks ago. It was because of the statewide calculation that forced that 5545 rebalancing. The legislature had no other choice but to reduce residential assessments, which resulted in net revenue losses. And what we didn't do, we didn't have any control over it. There was nothing we can do. It's the same mill levy. But just, this is maybe just an illustration to show you like, why is this, why does this come up every couple of years? It's because every time we see the, these significant reductions in the residential side in particular, this is the potential. Again, I don't want to put, I don't know the conditions in every other district. This is only CMC. And I don't mean to reflect what they may be experiencing, but this is what we saw. Why this is important for us and just to underscore the, the nature of our communities is, is that while the state may be somewhat closer to say a 5050 balance between residential and commercial property valuations, the resort communities are very much out of balance toward residential. So in the resort communities and including Glenwood Springs, our balance between residential and non-residential is probably closer to 60%, 60% residential, 40% commercial. And in some of our communities, it even goes as far as 70 to 75%. So say Breckenridge may be closer to 75% residential, 25% commercial. So when there's a reduction on the residential side, rural resort communities in particular are vulnerable to these challenges because we don't have very large sort of business sectors and really diverse business sectors in order to address some of those adjustments that might come.
Hey, Matt, I just to interrupt real quick. I have a question from Tony Hershey. Go ahead, Tony.
First of all, I wanted to apologize, Matt. I need to get broadband because I got kicked out. But did you mention at the beginning?
I did not do it. I just want to say I did not do it.
No, it wasn't your fault. I get that little warning, Mr. Man that says bandwidth. But I, you were breaking up a little at the beginning. Did you include, or you're going to get into your presentation, Matt, that this is on the ballot in November for the entire state? You withdraw Gallagher. We didn't talk about that yet. I'm sorry. I missed it.
No, you didn't miss anything. I will, I will address it here in just a moment.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Yep. No, you're welcome. So just to give you a sense of like, what is the historic way in which special districts have addressed Gallagher? And it's usually in mill levy overrides or mill levy increases. And just to give you a sense of kind of what that does to our state. So you have this statewide Gallagher amendment that adjusts assessment rates at the local level. And yet the locals, we can't change the 5545 split. And so the only thing available to local districts, of course, is a mill levy increase or an override. This is an example. And again, I don't have, there are so many special districts in this state that I don't know that I could possibly ever show you a map of what those are because there's so many and they're overlapping. And, but this at least gives you an illustration of school districts and what school districts have passed overrides and which ones have not. And again, this is a couple of years old, but at least again, the point is to show that it's unequal. So it's an equal, so the Gallagher amendment is equally affecting every property in the state. And yet not every school district has the ability to override that, that impact. So the green communities, and you don't have to know all these, you can kind of just follow the map and roaring fork is in this, of course, as well. But you'll see that the green ones are ones that had mill levy overrides that were passed in the last decade. The blue communities are those that had mill levy overrides passed in the decade prior. And the white communities are those that have never been successful in passing an override. What this leads to in the state is, is we have a standard in our constitution that says thorough and uniform education is mandatory in the state. And yet because of the reduction at the state level of property tax revenues, it's led to an unequal funding system for our school districts. And so this is one of those complications that I don't think anybody intended when they passed this law in, in 1982. But the result is, is that the only thing that locals can do is to pass their own mill levy or to pass their own increase. And it's resulted in a lot of haves and have-nots. And some of them may share the same county. Some of them may be within the same, you know, zip code. And they're still ending up with these great variations in those that can be successful and those that have not been able to be successful in trying to recover from the Gallagher amendment. So regarding the question that Mr. Hershey just mentioned a moment ago, there is a referred measure and I have to apologize. This was written, I wrote this, and if any of you are following the legislature, they were changing by the hour over the last week in the language that was being proposed. And so this has been modified slightly. But a bipartisan referred measure was introduced in the legislature this year for the first time in almost 20 years. You're seeing a bipartisan body at the legislature saying enough, we have to come up with a general solution. And again, just using this as an illustration, recognizing that the, that the effect is not equal statewide. And so we need to come up with a way that at least I'm speaking on behalf of the legislature. They were saying, we need to come up with a solution that creates a more equal environment that can sort of get rid of these every other year, you know, major shifts in revenue and sort of stop the process of having some communities that are able to sort of find their way out of the circumstances and others that are not, all things being equal. So this year, it was introduced in the Senate. Bob Rankin was one of the co-sponsors of the bill. So know that our local senator was one of the, he wasn't a prime sponsor, but he was a co-sponsor of the initial legislation. The referred measure at the time I wrote this was moving on its way to the House. It has since passed the House. And so referred this, this Senate referred measure will be on the ballot. The goal of this measure, and again, it's a little bit, the language that I sent over, this is the presentation I sent over to your offices. And so it has modified just a little bit. What they have is they're talking about striking the 5545 ratio so that that language would be removed from the Gallagher amendment so that we wouldn't be trying to balance our total tax revenues in a state that has maybe 60 to 70% of its revenue or of its properties, of the value of its properties in residential, that we come up with an arbitrary standard that says that commercial and residential have to be equal. I'll come back to that in just a moment around the commercial interests in this. That it will strike the mandatory assessment rates that is in the, that's in the constitution. So that 29% that you see for commercial properties, that language would be stricken from the constitution. The effect of that would be it would allow the legislature to set assessment rates. They would still be setting them on a statewide basis, but they would be doing it, we presume, on a basis that is based more in fact and more in time. So 20 years from now or 30 years from now, the conditions may be different. And giving the legislature the ability to know what may be changing within their balance between residential and commercial is one of those areas. And then the last thing that was in this initial. And then the last thing that was in this initial draft is a timeout, kind of a, they didn't want to have an initial kind of a whipsaw where things change so dramatically overnight that we didn't have time as a state to address any unintended consequences. And so there's a five-year no-change phase-in period that's introduced in this particular referred measure that would allow the state to basically freeze everything where it is right now and then work together over the next five years to come up with a new formula that would work. Let me conclude by by addressing something that I mentioned just a moment ago. And that is, one of the quote-unquote losers of the old Gallagher method. If you go back to this here, if a mill levy increase is passed in a community because the commercial property assessment is fixed at 29%, our commercial properties never see any tax breaks ever. They only ever see increases, even though they didn't create this challenge. So our businesses, we may be wanting to recruit more businesses and and have our small businesses protected and support them in our communities. And yet, when there's a statewide calculation and a mill levy override or a mill levy increase at the local level, what happens is that the burden of paying for local services shifts from residential to commercial. And every time we do a tax increase, it the the process is such that the the burden of the tax effort falls more heavily on the commercial side than on the residential side. So I offer that because much of what's been proposed in this new referred measure is being supported very strongly by local chambers of commerce that are trying to come up with a different way to more equally or more fairly. I'm using their language, by the way. I don't know that we have an opinion that we would share about that. Aside from saying that, we recognize that under the current mechanism, there is no way to provide relief or even even equity to a business interest where they may, they're going to continue to pay 29% interest with whatever the mill levy might be. And every time those mill levies increase, the businesses pay more and more and more of those, recognizing the current economic environment and the distress that many of our local businesses are facing. That weighs heavily on the minds of the legislature right now and trying to provide an environment where they can be successful moving forward. So I'll stop there, but know that that every time we do these increases, it's sort of some who have said to me in the past, oh, well, we can just increase and pass on those those rates. What's actually happening is that property values are increasing. The individuals are receiving those additional benefits in their homes and the value of their homes, and yet they're paying less in shifting the burden over to the businesses that have no opportunity for relief. And so a dilemma for legislative and other in yourselves and elected officials that are trying to find a way to balance those interests.
Matt, we have a question from Paul Step.
Hey, Matt. Thank you so much for being here today. Quick question on that last, the one that's showing right now, your sheet that allows the legislature to adjust the assessment rates. Is that tied to Tabor? And will that also require a vote by the taxpayers?
So so a couple of couple of questions or a couple of answers here. So because it is a referred measure to the state, they are complying with Tabor. So by doing, by referring it to the state and putting it on the ballot, they are in fact meeting the expectation of Tabor to allow the legislature to have this authority. Because of that, the legislature would have the authority technically to adjust tax rates both up and down. It's actually not the tax rate, it's the assessment level. So think of it that way. So it's the amount of the property that gets taxed. The legislature would have that authority indefinitely under that circumstance. And so it is in compliance with Tabor because it is on the ballot, but it would be quote exempt from future Tabor complications because it it will be an assessment change, not a tax rate change. So they're not adding mill levies and they're not changing income tax rates. They're just changing the amount of a property that gets taxed. It may result in additional tax revenues, which also often becomes a question in those circumstances. But I feel pretty confident that I've looked at the language of the question. I can send it to all of you if you want to see that language that finally passed. And it actually looks a lot like what CMC had done a few years ago, which is really focused more on the overall revenue question and not so much the tax rate. And so it was really more of a balancing of the revenue.
Any other questions? Okay. What else should we know, Matt? Rick, Rick has a question.
Yeah, I guess it's more of a comment. I think the hard sell here is going to be to educate people to the extent that if the legislators are adjusting assessment rates, that they're not really seeking a tax increase. I mean, I could see where that would be sort of the point of friction in all of this. Just a comment.
Yeah, it's possible. You know, I think the what what else should you know? I think two things I would offer. One is is that none of us thought this was coming. We, in many ways, with all of the economic uncertainty facing all of us, we didn't think that this was possible. We didn't think that we would be in a situation where commercial and residential would be out of balance because the way we saw the world, at least in our estimates, were that both were being impacted equally, somewhat equally by the current environment. What we're seeing right now is that as crazy as it may sound, maybe maybe not, maybe this seems totally rational to everybody. But commercial property valuation, according to the Department of Local Affairs, they have estimated that the commercial property assessment for the state is expected to decline 36% this year. That may not be a surprise. You go, yeah, sure. Okay. Well, yeah, you do it. You do a 90-day timeout on the economy, and this is where you end up. Maybe that's not so surprising. What is surprising, to me at least, is that residential properties are going up still. And so what's happening is is that this this sort of point of friction that Rick just mentioned is being caused by the fact that our our local business interests have been really significantly affected by the economy. And yet our residential property values can continue to climb. And that keeps pulling us further and further apart from this 55-45 split, which keeps forcing us ironically to shift the burden to the business sector, which is like, it's the craziest thing. And you say, well, residential properties are actually doing better right now than they were before the pandemic. And yet they're going to pay less than they did before. And the businesses are going to absorb a larger larger amount. So that would be one thing that I would want you to know is just to understand that this particular economic environment we're in is not being equally felt across those two sectors. The residential is very different from the commercial, according to Dolar. The second thing that I would put on the table as you as you think about this is that this is an initiative that was an 11th hour. It was like an 11th and a half hour urgent matter that the Joint Budget Committee didn't plan on doing this. This was not a part of their 2020 legislative package. This is something that we've been talking about for a decade. And it's been, there've been other reasons to postpone it or delay it or tell them, tell us to do it locally and not do it statewide. And there was a statewide interim committee, some of you may remember, that was hosted, excuse me, at CMC two years ago. So this has been on their minds. There just hasn't been urgency to act until the pandemic hit. And when the pandemic hit, the legislature finally said enough. We're going to try to at least put something on the ballot to resolve these questions so it doesn't do further damage. And maybe pause this to see where we might end up. And importantly, in order to get a referred measure through the legislature, you have to have a supermajority. This is not a, it's not a minimum majority. It's not 50% plus one. It's a supermajority has to be involved. So you have to bring both parties together, and they were able to get a supermajority through the Senate and the House. And this is how significant it is. In spite of that, there is no campaign for this right now. So it's not like, this is not something that was being advocated by a particular, you know, special interest group that was trying to get their question on the ballot. This is really the legislature acting out of great fiscal urgency to address what may be coming next year. And so there is an opportunity for local organizations to get involved. And I recognize that the city collects most of its revenue through sales taxes. And so you may not see this as quite so closely associated. But I would encourage the city to look at the services that make the quality of life in Glenwood Springs and in our region possible. And most of those are not funded by sales taxes. They're actually funded by property taxes. And so Fire District, the Water District, Carmenton College, the School District, early childhood education, most of those are funded through property taxes, not sales taxes. And so as you think about, you may have a direct interest in the things that you have authority over. And yet you're going to see a lot of urgency and a lot of initiative, I expect, coming from those other organizations that are part of the services that make communities possible. And I can tell you with our campaign two years ago, it was strongly supported by all the chambers of commerce. So the business sector, interestingly, they actually had to absorb a slightly higher tax increase. But their comment to us as a college was that the most important thing about the college was actually not just the training of the college. It was the quality of life to the community. That's what they told us. And they said, the college provides access for education, for early childhood, for our high school students to get services. You train the nurses, you train the police officers, you train the firefighters. And so at least for what we heard was not so much about CMC, it was about the community. And so that's at least the way that that was being interpreted at the time was that that's what they were staking their support in and trying to say that the business community interest is not a direct sort of, I want more employees. It was the reason why people come and live here and enjoy the quality of life is because they have safety and healthcare and education and services that are made possible by certain organizations. And so my point is, is that there's not a campaign yet. And CMC's Board of Trustees have not yet weighed in on this question. They're meeting next week. But I anticipate that there's likely to be some quick groundswell because this wasn't organized prior to the legislative session, unlike a normal year, when there might be something that's more organized. And so we'll see what form this takes in the messaging and to Rick's point about how to communicate this and what I have found at least, and again, I'm only speaking from my own experience. I've been to the Rotary's, I've met with the different groups, and I've been to the different public forums. And what I found is, is when you have the time to explain what's going on, I think most people understand it. And they go, oh, like, okay, now I understand why this is a dilemma. And you're not just asking for more revenue, you're trying to address sort of this arbitrary ratio that's found in the law. The difficulty is, is how can we reach that many people? Like, how can you reach as many folks who are also potentially obviously struggling themselves? And I recognize that that is also, it's a hard election year to maybe have that given where things stand economically. At the same time, a lack of action is almost a certainty in a near 20% reduction in revenues to organizations like ours, which is now why you're probably seeing more action for the districts that are affected.
We have a bunch of questions now. Paula, then Charlie, then Rick.
Here we go. Hey, so Matt, I understand the urgency of this. You know, I've kind of looked at Gallagher and Tabor for a couple of years and tried as hard as I can to understand it as as much as I can. And I realize, you know, the urgency, especially when we look at our special districts and counties and things like that. My question is, I'm back on that five-year policy kind of that the holding period. And can you clarify on the policy part that that's when the legislature would be? Would that be where they would look at how to phase this in? What kind of changes to make so that Colorado doesn't end up with the kind of residential taxes that we see in California, New York, and that type of stuff? Is there anything along that line within this plan to address that?
So unfortunately, you can't write in, as you know, you can't write a law for good faith, future expectations of how a future elected body is going to interpret something. And so I think, you know, that's the risk. I think we all acknowledge that. My, I might encourage you to ask Barbara to come address your your counsel to answer those kinds of questions. Because frankly, he's the one on the Joint Budget Committee who can say, here's what we're, this is what the expectation is. And these are the ideas that were being discussed on the floor and why he and his colleagues supported it. I just think you might get a more accurate answer of exactly how that might or what their expectations are. I can tell you from having worked in that environment before, the expectation, as I understand it, is is that it gives us a five-year window to in two, for two, three, two reasons. One is to allow, we hope, to return to some level of economic stability for the state so that we're not making decisions based upon pandemic environments. But we can say, let's, let's, let's pause where we are. Let's not cut. Let's just keep things where they are. Get to a point where you might see some daylight on the budget and then come back to this in a bipartisan way, talk it through. Because at that point, the presumption is, is that there may be, there are other election cycles, there are new players, there are new ideas. And then you can talk it through about how to make that work. Obviously, is there certainty about how the legislature might act? No, but that's how any, you know, body, and I think at least for me, I actually personally, having worked with multiple legislatures and different parties and all the different things that happen down there, I'm comfortable recognizing that it is a very deliberative process and it is a highly engaged process. And this is not done in a back room. The business sector, all of the affected agencies, the school districts, they are all likely to be at the table, is my expectation. And the and the goal will likely to be my, in an earlier version of this bill, if that maybe gives you some sense of what they were thinking, was actually to kind of just freeze things where they are and just hold that one. And just say, can we just freeze it and stop cutting and leave it there? So it wasn't so much a revenue increase. It was to stop the deterioration, the arbitrary deterioration. That was really more the fear because how can you plan five years in advance if you think there's the potential of wiping out, again, K-12 is 50% of the state's budget? If you're going to wipe out 10% of that, like, how are you going to come up with those revenues if you can't even anticipate that they're coming? So how can you invest in transportation? How can you invest in in new infrastructure? Unless you have confidence that you feel like you're at least stable in making those decisions without having to be forced. Obviously, with Amendment 23 with K-12, which requires a certain level of spending. I think that's, at least for me, the intent as I saw it was that their hope was to effectively freeze things where they are and eliminate the future reductions.
Thank you.
I saw Charlie and Rick had their hands up. I don't see them now. Do you still have questions, either Charlie or Rick? Okay, go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you. Good for you to have a mute. Matt, thank you. Good explanation. I think I've always understood it. And this certainly helped me understanding it a little bit clearer on that dynamic between the 45-55 and the 29%. So I guess a couple of questions. You said you could send us the bill. I would really, if you could send it to Deborah, she could distribute it, that'd be great. I'd like to see the bill itself. So that's one thing. The second thing is you talked about, you know, no real campaign for this. So the kind of two things, what can we do to help? And should we, I mean, we could pass a resolution, obviously, in support of this, which I'm sure we could, I would think that this council would support. But would it make sense to try to get either the community to move or some other organization, maybe rather the community move gets more direct to Glenwood? But maybe we get one member from Glenwood and one member from CMC and one member from the Fire District and all up and down the valley and see if we can't get the unified group to work on a local campaign group to try to get this passed.
Yeah, you know, let me, let me, I'm going to hedge my answer here only because I am, I am here representing CMC. And so I cannot, I can't.
I recognize that you're talking as an individual, not as a representative. Okay, let's do it that way. I appreciate it.
Yeah. So but I will say that at least in past experience, can't, you know, I think those engagement is an important part of this. And having advocates and just to name people who could be potentially helpful. Mary Ann Vergelli was a CMC trustee. Many of you know Mary Ann. And she was obviously led the community on Move in the past and through her role at the chamber. And so I think there are people who will likely be looking. And so I think there are people who will likely be looking for opportunities. I can't speak for the college right now because my board doesn't act on this until next week. And so they'll likely do something in, on next Wednesday when they have their first meeting since this past. So they haven't had that opportunity. But the chambers of commerce have been deeply engaged. The Fire Districts statewide, and so the Fire Districts Association has been deeply engaged. K-12 is, is also now engaging. And again, that can come in a couple of different forms. But I, you know, I, I'm waiting to see who will take the lead. Some of you who have been involved in a conversation that happened actually last year here at Morgridge Commons called Build a Better Colorado. You might recall that conversation where Reeves Brown and others with that organization came in to just sort of poll Glenwood, to learn more about what, what opinions were concerning this and other issues. And so I wouldn't be surprised if that organization or others like it activate around the issue. And so there may be an opportunity, again, you know your process about the resolutions and the things that you do. I think the on-the-ground activities are likely, you know, CMC, I can tell you that we have a seven county region. We can, our board may be involved at that level, but it'll likely be a statewide campaign of some kind.
Okay, I'm unmuted, Jonathan. Sorry, I'm pretty, this is Greg Juggo, the Glenwood Springs Royal Fire District Board. And Zoom is still pretty new to me. But I had a couple of questions. At our last Royal Board meeting, we all voted to file with the county clerk an intent to, to put a ballot question on. But it's, I'm encouraged by the statewide effort that might be happening with, with the legislators, both houses passing a referred measure. And I'm curious how the other districts that are involved with the city, such as a general improvement district and the, what is another one, GID?
Colorado River District is one of them.
Yeah. So, you know, we thought, I'm encouraged by the idea that there might be a coordinated effort with all these districts around here. So I didn't know if the city had any intentions with the GID and anything to pursue something separately. You know, I, you know, I guess we could all hitch our wagon onto this idea that it could pass statewide. But if that fails, then what happens? You know, where are we? Then we're kind of on a downward track and we don't want that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's directed to me. I think it's more to the, to the council about what they might do. But I will tell you, Greg, we, we felt the same way when CMC passed its question two years ago. We, we, we said all along, when we, when we were pursuing it, we said, this is a Band-Aid. There really needs to be a statewide issue. In the absence of that, we're going to pursue this question as sort of a, this is our, this is our safety net. This is the ability for us to make sure that at least for our communities, we can make sure that we have a stopgap that holds the line, if you will, from that, from further erosion, unexpected or unintended erosion. I can't advocate for you or anybody else on what you think would be the right method. But at least for us, it was sort of a belt and suspenders approach. And we said, you know, I sure hope we start to see some action on something else. But in the absence of that, we should probably make sure that we also have another question that, that is, for which we are prepared to act if, if needed.
All right. Are there any other questions from council staff or the fire board? Okay, Matt, thank you very much. We really appreciate you taking time out to help inform us and educate us on what's going on here. And I see this applies to our Fire District Board pretty, pretty strongly. So I guess I would just kind of look for a head nods from the rest of council at this point to move us along. Go ahead, Deborah. What would you look for? You're muted.
I was just, while you were thinking that, I wanted to publicly thank CMC for allowing us to rent 10 parking spaces in the parking garage for the very competitive price of zero. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is a screaming deal. Thank you very much. So yeah, I guess, again, thank you for that. And, and everybody just looking to look for a head nod. Would everybody feel comfortable at least having the conversation as a agenda item at our next meeting, our July 2 meeting, I believe, to, the agenda item would be to discuss and debate whether we would put this on the November ballot. So does anybody have a problem? Well, I just need two, two other people. So Rick and then Shelley.
I'm nodding yes. I think it's something that we really do need to discuss. To the extent possible, it'd be interesting to have a few scenarios behind that. And what it might mean for the city, what it might mean for our potential partners as we're talking about it, just so people can stick their teeth into it and understand what happens if the amendment doesn't pass. Or, excuse me, the ballot initiative, the amendment passed a long time ago.
All right, Shelley. Thanks, Rick.
Okay, thanks. First of all, I'd like to say, Greg, it is really great to see you. Thanks for being at our meeting. I'm so glad you're here and yeah, see you sitting up and looking healthy is best gift I've had all week. So, um, I would like to say, and thanks to Matt for the great explanation on this. It's a confusing issue. Every time I think I understand it for a couple of months, if you're not on top of it all the time, it's really hard to, to stay on top of understanding it. So I'd be interested in having that discussion. I'd like to have maybe the Fire Department or the board there to talk about if we have an option to have our own measure on the ballot that could maybe be worded if the state one doesn't pass or, you know, however that might work. But I'm also interested in learning more about different scenarios of the tax, the assessment increases, how it would affect non-residential properties and residential under different, differing scenarios.
Thanks, Shelley. All right. It looks like we have our two to refer to the next agenda. Tony? Go ahead, you're on.
Thank you. No, I, I, I just wanted, Shelley sort of said what I was going to say, but Mr. Mayrith, are we talking about, I mean, I, I'd be more inclined to see if the state approved this in November, but then I understand you have to wait. So is that the sort of discussion we're going to have, whether there'll be two ballot issues which might be confusing for voters? Or is it going to be just ours? And then, I mean, or that would be my question that I'd like to be answered at the next meeting, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that's the intent to have that exact conversation, knowing that I believe we have to wait around until the next general election because this is a district. So we don't get another crack at this until 2022, I believe. So that, that there is some consideration for that urgency. Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to get, I support putting him on our next meeting to discuss. And I also want to say hi to Greg. And I like the beard, Greg. It's great.
I would just say Greg's got a good start. Let's just, let's leave it at that. Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, thank you very much again, Matt, for presenting this to us in a way we can kind of get our hands around a little bit. Thank you for the Fire District Board. We will meet back here in an hour approximately at 6:05 to log back on to, to be prepared for our meeting this evening. Thank you again, everybody. We'll see you, some of you shortly.